Good evening. I'd like to call into session tonight's meeting of the Kennebunk Planning Board. Today is Monday, November 28th, 2022. First item on our agenda is a special exception application for a wetland crossing for a driveway. Town Planner Brittany Howard, if you could introduce this project to us.
Uh, this is a special exception for Wetlands Crossing. It's map sixty-four, lot nine. It's lot two on the supplied lot division plan. It's nineteen Harris Seacat Road. The applicant is requesting permission to fill approximately two hundred and eighty-six square feet of priority three wetlands for a driveway crossing. It's in the Branch Brook Aquifer Zones AMB in the Shoreland Overlay District. Currently, it's a vacant piece of property. The board should schedule a site walk date. If the application is deemed complete and there isn't anything outstanding, they should set a public hearing date. The Conservation Commission reviewed the plans at their meeting on November twenty-first, um, which I did send that on to the applicant as well as the board. They didn't have any comments as they believed it met the requirements for Army Corps. Um, and they just wanted to be advised of when the site walk date would be happening. It was also sent to the town engineer and the fire department for review. Um, Chris did get an email back to me, uh, I believe late last week. He didn't really see anything in here that was, um, too much consequence. I've yet to hear from the fire department, but I will forward those along to you as well.
Thank you. And for the applicant?
Good evening, board members. Thank you. I'm James Logan, wetland scientist, soil scientist, site evaluator, and environmental consultant with Longview Partners. You folks mostly know me. You've seen me before. This is a relatively straightforward and simple one. I'm thankful, uh, for. I'm here on behalf of Karen Andrews. She's the owner of this lot. It is one of, uh, a number of family subdivision lots, already approved by you folks a number of years ago. Uh, we're here tonight strictly for the special exception, just for the driveway crossing. The limit of your review is strictly for that, uh, impact that we need in a priority-three rated wetland. Uh, I accepted as accurate, uh, upon review, a wetland delineation previously done by Leon Blood of Lower Village Survey. And we're in essential agreement with that delineation. Uh, on behalf of Karen and the board, though, we did redeline the portion of the wetlands immediately adjacent to the crossing, so that that part would be evident to the board, uh, during its site walk and, uh, for its review. Uh, my big hope tonight, uh, in getting before you with this application in as timely a fashion as possible, is to schedule the site walk prior to a snowfall, because I know that this board prefers to, uh, avoid site walks after the snow. Uh, this is a relatively, uh, again, simple and straightforward application, and it's not far at all into the woods from the edge of the road. So it'll be an easy one to review, and it won't require a, a large amount of the board's time, because it's a very small wetland impact that we need to get through this wetland. As you can see by the subdivision plan and the wetlands that Leon has on that plan, those are shaded in green. And they essentially, i- it's a long-fingered drainage channel that is essentially parallel the Harris Seacat Road that we have to get across. Uh, our plan by Longview shows the narrowest place within that wetland system, uh, uh, for the placement of a culvert and that, that crossing. Uh, we have something like, uh, under three hundred square feet of impact needed for that crossing. We are proposing a three-foot diameter culvert, although there is no stream or water course present at this location. Uh, we are proposing the three-foot diameter culvert because that's consistent with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, their typical straight face. You know, the, the easiest way to get them to sign off is to provide the thirty-six-inch culvert, bedding six inches of it into the ground, into the bottom of the wetland to allow for, uh, wildlife, uh, habitat, uh, access that would allow for, uh, unfettered wildlife to proceed through the culvert, uh, uh, in, in unfettered fashion and not require wildlife to get up onto the, the, uh, surface of the driveway. Uh, we have added on Brittany's request, uh, that culvert detail. I believe we now have the direction of drainage shown. As you faced, the lot that would be from the left to the right, or back towards High Street is that drainage direction away from Route One. And, um, and that's about it. We're talking about one single-family dwelling, a driveway, something less than two hundred feet of length. Uh, typical surface, uh, travel width, twelve feet wide with a foot of shoulder on each side and, and, and a base width, as we've shown, for the minimum impact that we can manage, uh, and still get across that, that wetland finger, if you will. With that, I would answer any questions that the board may have and hope that we can expedite a site walk. Hunting season's over. The deer's in the freezer.
Thanks, Jim. Ted, I'm gonna start with you.
Here's Sonny. Thank you very much, Jim. Appreciate this. It appears to be a, a minor, minor issue. I, I do note that the, uh, uh, the water, uh, department is in a butter.
That's correct.
And so, um, uh, and I, I'm looking at the, the chart here, and so I, I would imagine you're gonna get a letter from them, uh, review that and see if any issues that might occur in that would affect that, because that's the Branch Brook Aqua Fire there. So I, I'd look forward to that letter. That would be very helpful to me, because I, it's hard for me to tell beyond that if the driveway and the house would have any impact, but having a letter from them would be certainly helpful. Uh, that's my only comment.
Thanks, Ted. Richard?
Uh, thank you, Chris. Um, Jim, how far is it to the, to the brook from where you're gonna develop? I, I guess first, how far is it from, to the brook from the crossing?
Ballpark.
Well, Leon's plan is a one inch equals a hundred scale. I'm gonna say, even if the house is back a ways, you're still gonna be over eight hundred feet to the brook. And the rear of the lot is still another four hundred and fifty or five hundred to the brook. There's the open space. If you see the shaded area, uh, which is protected from future, uh, future development.
Thank you. Um, the next question is, um, next question is lost to me. Has KKW been given the plan to look at?
So since the last application, that was before, so it was in the BBA, BBB zone, um, Justin has been added to the agenda, so he gets a copy of the agenda. So as far as I know, he's looked at it as in a butter to the property. He will also be notified of the public hearing in addition to getting the agenda as well.
Okay. Um, has the fire chief looked at the turnaround that you're planning? Or been given any?
I don't believe we've had-
Had a chance to look at the crossing?
I don't believe we've had fire chief input yet. However, uh, Karen was working, uh, previously with, uh, Wayne Berry, and they did obtain the driveway entrance permit at the location. We've shown it. So we have at least vetted a portion of the driveway with the town. I don't believe the fire chief directly yet, though.
It was sent to the fire chief and town engineer.
I just haven't heard back yet.
Just, well, he had some questions about the culvert, but Chris is going to address those questions, so.
Okay. So, so we should get his blessing on, uh, the configuration of the drive so that he can get his trucks in and out if he needs to. Uh, have you chosen a place to put the septic yet?
Yes, there is a place, I believe identified. So it is a potential wastewater disposal site on our plan, twenty feet off the back right of the house.
So that would put it five hundred and a few feet from the brook?
More than that.
More than that?
Yeah, that would be probably closer to eight hundred or nine hundred feet from the brook.
Alright.
Certainly, to develop a septic design, we would, uh, scale that and show that on a plan for an actual permit when, uh, Karen gets ready to actually, uh, propose the dwelling and provide building plans to code enforcement.
Alright. Um, that's all the questions I have.
Thanks, Richard. David?
Hi, Jim. Um, and Karen. Um, can you, on the plot plan, can you show what lot is it? Is it lot two? Did I hear you say? Lot two, okay. Okay. Um, I guess I don't see, I, I can see on your, on your plan roughly where you're gonna, where you're gonna, where you're gonna put your thirty-six-inch, uh, inside diameter, um, culvert. Um, are, is lot one built on?
Yes, it is. That's Karen's brother's lot.
Okay. 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 Um, what, I think what Eric and Elizabeth did was to provide Craig in lots, this is lot three, which is built on. Lot four, I don't think is, unless, unless, uh-
It is not. That's Chad's.
It, okay. It's, so it's Chad's to, there wa, there was an idea that they would share a driveway potentially.
Chad and Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Correct. But her driveway is not on the, in the least amount of wetlands for us to cross. It's much wider on her side. Where I abut her, so we decided that we would put it on the other side.
Okay. I guess what my, I guess where I'm going or what I'm asking at this, at this point is, is if, I don't know whether you can, you've already got a pavement cup for lot one, right?
Yes, there's an existing driveway on lot number one. Correct.
Is, is that, is that a relative of yours?
Is, they are not interested in sharing a driveway.
Okay. I, I'm, you see why I'm asking this question? Because, you know, um, Chad and Elizabeth have, so it necessitates you having your own crossing.
Correct.
That's why I'm asking. If there was any way that could be shared, that would save, you know, what you wanna do. Um, what's the net lot area? Jim?
Richard, David, excuse me. These lots were all previously approved by-
Okay.
It's unusual to have to ask these questions.
Oh, that's alright.
However, the lot area calculations are all right here. They have over three acre minimums.
Okay.
You wouldn't have approved it in the first place.
Right.
We're not conforming lots.
Right.
You're way too good for that. Um, so, so lot two does have its, its adequate three acres of area. Lot two has three point two four acres in that.
Okay.
Lot, lot two, to clarify, based on the original area calculations on the approved subdivision of plan, shows a gross lot area on lot two of three point eight five acres minus, uh, the wetland. Uh, and then the, the net lot area or upland area on that lot is three point two four.
Okay.
Or one four, one four one four eighty-eight square, uh, square feet, uh, a hundred and forty-one thousand.
Alright. Um, so wells and septics?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright. Harris Seacat doesn't have any?
No public water there.
No, no, no water loop there, even if it's that close. Okay.
Though it is the BBB zone.
Yeah.
Single-family residences are allowed.
Mm-hmm.
This is the liberty order.
Okay. Um, yes, the, the only other thing I, I guess I'm worried about is one sixty-five High Street, which we visited. No, it's got nothing to do with you guys. It's in the BBB zone. The ho, I believe the house was, but the driveway crossing was going through the A, BBA. Okay?
That is something I'm familiar with. That is a lot that I'm familiar with. I was not here at the planning board for that, but I did-
That's correct. You weren't. That's okay.
For that, so I am familiar with it.
Good. So-
David, they're not proposing any work in the BBA. All the work that they're proposing is in the BBB zone, which is the less restrictive. The BBA zone is the one that abuts the Branch Brook, which is the more restrictive zone. So this is very different than the one sixty-five High application.
Good. That answered it. Thank, thank you, Brittany. You know, I just didn't-
Thank you, Brittany.
Yeah, right.
Double thank you.
One of the services she provides. Um, so I just wanna make sure we're not, we're not in a similar situation here.
No. I don't think this is anywhere near the same level of controversy.
Alright. I don't, I don't think I have any other questions that haven't been asked already. Um, so at this point, thank you.
Thank you, David. Yes.
Hi, Jim, you mentioned that they already had their driveway permit?
Yes, it's in your application, I believe.
Thank you. Um, and was that reviewed for site distance?
I'm assuming, yes.
It looks like there's a little bit of a curve going on the road.
Yeah, the town would have vetted that.
Alright. Sorry, is it not working? Okay. Alright. Um, yeah, I was just on sightlines. I remember when we did one of the adjacent lots a couple of years ago, and I remember there being a sightline in distance because of vegetation. So I, and I'm sure we'll see when we go out for the site walk, you know, whether it's necessary to trim back a little bit. Um, you know, for the sightline so people can see a car pulling out of the driveway and stuff. You're shaking your head.
Yeah, it's not on the curve, so I, I think you'll, it will be clear when you're there, you know, because we all have memories of Harris Seacat Road and what, what curve we're on. It's on the-
I didn't find any site distance issue on that particular lot.
Okay. Alright. I have no other questions. You know, we'll see it, and then probably at that point, I'll have more questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Janice. Dan?
Hey, Jim, the only question I had, and I think it'd be identified as we do the site walk, I just found it peculiar that the lot one has two twin twelve-inch culverts versus the thirty-six on this one. And based on scale of the drawing, this is obviously a wider point than that. So it's just seeing what that water flow is like, and because it's all directionally moving that way, it, it just seemed very odd.
My guess is that they put the two twelves because there was a less expensive alternative to a single thirty-six. Uh, we're gonna get more bang for Karen's buck with a thirty-six, because you'll see with the slight banks that are evident along that wetland that we'll use some portion of the cross-section of that thirty-six-inch culvert to make that, uh, crossing so that it's dead level going across it, so it's, it won't have a dip and then go back up.
Yeah, I was just more worried about it back up somewhere.
Yeah, but I think probably the one thirty-six-inch culvert, and that is downslope, not upslope-
Right.
Of the two twelves should adequately handle any flow we have and not cause any restriction whatsoever at all for the upslope people. Okay?
That's all I had, Chris.
Jim? Based on your, your plan, it looks like the water, I don't, I guess I don't understand your upslope and downslope terminology. The water is flowing down toward lot one, toward the twelve-inch, two twelve-inch culverts, based on your plan that you have submitted to us.
Yeah, my, I think my partner's got the flow backwards. I, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna adjust those and, and turn those, because if, if I'm not mistaken, the drainage is headed this way, towards, uh, towards High Street and away from Route One.
Okay.
That, that's the, this is the necking of the wetland here, even narrower, uh, and it's, and it's actually getting wider.
I understand.
Downslope is what I believe, so, so I, I, I believe we have the arrows in the wrong direction.
Alright. We'll need to clarify that, obviously.
Yep. Well, I'll get that sorted out between now and the next meeting.
Yep. Um, and yeah, I know that we talked about trying to share driveways in these lots, um, when it first came through.
But that was when we were having a shared road that went behind all the lots. So there were-
Well, no, even like, well, I know that we, when we talked about the other two lots for the route, they are shared. They did agree to share a driveway. It's just unfortunate that we have to put another crossing so close together. That's what I'm saying. And the curb cuts are also very close together, which I don't know if that poses a problem or not. It looks like they're, what, a couple, you know, fifty feet away or less. So, um, okay. Uh, that's my, that was my biggest question, was whether or not you were able to, you've explored, explored that option. That's, was my, was my biggest question.
That's why we're here.
Yep.
Essentially, that option was exhausted.
Okay.
It's not an option any longer. The other thing I might mention in terms of David's comment is that if we were sharing driveways, they would have to become official easements.
Yep.
And then they would have to be subtracted from net lot area, which is why I don't believe it's gonna see the first time around for the, for this approval. It was a recommendation, but it was not a requirement.
Right. No, we understand.
I think that's probably why, because of the complicated fact that, like, the net lot areas, maybe some lots, though this one might not have been other than that.
Jim, you gotta get that mic closer to you.
Sorry about that. I might, uh, I, I might have found that, um, uh, easements on the other lots, uh, may have been problematic, and that's probably why it was not, uh, an option selected at the time.
Well, based on our net lot, it looks like the others, except for lot four, would have been fine. But, alright, I get it. Um, obviously, the less impacts we could have, the better, so, um, other than that, I think my colleagues have answered all the other questions that I had come up with. So, uh, is the site ready for us to see? Is the driveway center line marked and the impacts?
No, but we're gonna make it ready.
Okay. Will it be ready by, say, Saturday, if that was?
We will make it ready by Saturday.
Uh, I'll ask board members if they're available Saturday morning at eight AM.
Not sure.
I have a haircut, I think.
The sun will be up. No snow on the ground.
Don't have any snow or, or in the forecast?
Yep.
I'll, I'll find your crock if you get it stuck in the mud.
Oh, count me in.
I think it might be, uh, a tradition that we have a site walk on prelude weekend, the first weekend in prelude every year. Um, but,
Really cold.
Yep. So, we don't wanna ruin tradition. Alright, so we'll set a site walk for Saturday, December second, the second?
Third.
Third, thank you, uh, at eight AM.
Do you wanna show us?
Your microphone's on.
Sorry. Um, do you wanna, can you, would you be able to show us where you project a turnaround to be subject to approval by the fire chief? Would you give us just a rough idea where that's gonna be?
Yeah, I, I suspect it'll be consistent with where we think the garage will land, and it'll be in the area of the garage, perhaps turning out to the left in front of the garage.
Okay.
But yes, we, we'll manage that between now and Saturday.
Okay. Good.
At least as a first try.
Where would you like us to park?
I think the shoulder of Harris Seacat is fine. It's just not that busy, a stretch of road right there, and the shoulder's pretty good.
Okay.
Um, gathering, is gathering lane? It's private. Okay. We won't do that then, although I know them and they would probably let us. It's okay. Yeah, I would say we're fine out on Harris Seacat. Okay?
That's fine. Thank you.
I thank the board members.
Thank you. We'll see you Saturday.
Have a good evening.
Yep.
Karen, good to see you. Please.
I'm not in the office on Friday, so your reminder for the site walk will come on Thursday afternoon.
That's right. Um,
Friday. I'm not in Friday. This Friday coming up, so you'll get your reminder on Thursday.
That's right. Um, you send Bob a note. I don't know if one of these back in town. Okay. Alright. Yep, that's right. Yeah, 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 that's fine. Okay. Yeah, maybe David will make this one. Did he lose you last week?
You know, I was-
Okay. Sounds like a story.
I was pigpiled and it was like, just didn't get it done. It does. Life gets in the way. My apologies, everybody.
That's all good. Alright. Um, next item on our agenda is to review minutes from our meeting from November fourteenth. Any comments or questions on page one? Page two?
Yeah, on page two, the top par, where my page break is, it's the top paragraph that starts off, Howard informed the board. But, um, the last sen, last sentence, it says, install a retaining wall in order to move the sidewalk over and truck turning plan. We left something out. I don't know what, what about the truck turning plan?
I suggested improve. No, there, it needs to be an adjective, improve.
Needs to be something telling you what to do.
And submitted a truck turning plan.
Well, why are they reta, that, why are they installing a retaining wall?
I decided to install a retaining wall in order to move the sidewalk over and submitted a truck turning plan. Because I don't think they had a truck turning- They hadn't submitted a truck turning plan from the previous application.
It's a different state.
Right.
Alright, that's fine. If that's your understanding.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, then that's, that's fine.
I would concur.
Didn't make sense the way it was written.
Anything else on two?
Yeah. Um, we look.
Um, if we look at the one, two, three, fourth paragraph from the bottom of the page, discussion ensued about the kind and height of the proposed fence. Um, Steve Doe stated the fence would be six feet high and likely be vinyl. I get, I, I think he said it would be solid and-
Yep. At that point in the discussion, that's what he said.
He did say it would likely be vinyl.
Okay.
He did say that.
Okay.
Later in the meeting, he talked about it definitely being vinyl and solid.
Yep.
Right, and you know, the other thing that it says is in, under the conditions, is that they are gonna actually provide a fence plan, um-
Detail.
Detail, I think it is. It does, vinyl fence detail shall be added to the plan. That's item four of the conditions that's on page eight. So I guess that, that'll pass for it.
Yeah. No, it's understood that it's, it will be, it's a vinyl fence.
Yeah.
So. Anything else on two? Page three?
Minor addition, uh, second paragraph, E-trainer, take the D and make it an R. Thank you.
E-trained. E-trainer. Anything else on three? Page four, starts the findings. Page five. Page six. Page seven. Page eight.
Um, I think, this is second paragraph from the bottom, see Ritter of, I don't think he's with Sebaggo Technics. I think he's with Walsh Associates.
Oh, Connor, Connor Ritter?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, he works for Bill Walsh.
Yeah, so I think Sebaggo Technics has changed to Walsh Associates.
Walsh.
Yeah.
Anything else on eight? Page nine? Page ten? Page 11, is there a motion?
I, I will make a motion. I had a question, just, on the sketch plan for York Street for the 10 units, it says it's a vacant, it's vacant land. Has it ever been used at all? Does it ever had, does it have a previous history at all?
I'd have to go and look at the assessing record.
The only thing I'm asking, and I, I will make my motion, this isn't contingent on the motion, what I am saying is that if there's any hazmat on that property from previous uses or something, that, if it says, they, I think vacant is suggesting that everything's okay, and I just think would be good for the applicant to know that.
It just means there's no buildings on it currently.
Okay, but, you, you see what my question is?
Well, so if you look at the assessing record, it says it's being vacant, I'd have to pull the building file, but I mean, technically, they should do that as part of their due diligence of purchasing the property.
I hope so, because if they get into a situation of.
We're just, we're saying what the current use is. The current use right now is vacant.
Yeah.
I'm not saying past use was vacant.
Right.
So.
But if there was, for instance, an automobile garage there, or if there was some type of an application where, you know, hides were being tanned or something, you know, all, you know, it's a groundwater contamination issue that.
Right, but they're not using, they're on public water there, so they wouldn't be drawing from groundwater for their drinking water.
Yeah, I, I, I see that. I'm just saying that if it's disturbed for drainage and, you know, putting in foundations and all that kind of stuff, that's my, my only concern.
I mean, I can, I can look, but they should do that as part, it's similar to the one up the street or down the street from there, 79 York Street, there was a house there that they took down.
Right.
So their main concern there was to make sure the septic tank was pulled.
Right.
But I mean, that really.
That's okay. I mean, I just don't want to see some contingency in terms of a prior use. I know it's vacant now, that's all. And as long as somebody's doing the diligence on that, that's fine.
I have a question on that. Wouldn't the site review board, which had approved that earlier as an industrial, would they have reviewed that prior uses? Because then it's zoning when it was zoned as for.
We don't really take a look at that either.
I would think that would be part of, if they're looking at that site, they would be looking at that.
I mean, if there's a history of that site having been used, like the one up the street from the memory care, there's a history of that using, being used as a dumping site. So, if that's the case, they did soil testing, but that's usually, they usually come down when they're purchasing the property, look at the assessing file, look at the building file, and if something pops, that's usually when they go through a more sturdy review, and to be quite honest, those properties tend to sit for a while because nobody wants to.
Okay.
Open that package.
Okay. Brittany, if you'd take a look, that would be, you know, take a look at the building history?
Yep.
Okay.
I, I can share that information with you, but I'm not sure, I mean.
I think it should be shared with the board, that's all.
Okay.
You know, I'm, all I'm saying is, we're, that we're not looking at a historic site here that was 100 years ago or 200 years ago.
From what Bob was saying at the last meeting is that it was approved for the commercial projects and that it was pretty well vegetated, and that they had cleared out the vegetation and started some of the site work. So to me, that makes me think that nothing was there before, but I will check the file.
Great, thanks. Ready for your motion?
Anytime.
I've been waiting for the last 2 minutes. I move that the Town of Kennybunk Planning Board approve the Town of Kennybunk Planning Board meeting minutes for Monday, November 14th, 2022, as corrected.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All is in favor? Aye. None opposed. All right, the minutes are approved.
The only thing I'm realizing right now that Jim has left is we didn't set a public hearing date for his application, which we don't need to vote on or do anything with, and it wouldn't be till that first meeting in January, because we don't have a second meeting in December.
Yep.
So, if the board's okay with doing that first meeting in January, I can touch base with Jim and make, I know he's going to Florida, and just make sure that he's back.
Okay. I don't see any objection, there's not any additional information except for the.
The drainage flow.
Sign off from the fire chief review.
Right.
That's all. So, but no, no, no additional information from him except for some corrections. So I think that'd be fine.
Okay.
To schedule a public hearing.
January 9th.
January 9th, for 19 Harrisika Road.
And I'll just double check with him that he's available and back.
Yep.
If not, is there an issue with the contingency of it being the 23rd?
Nope, we can move to the 23rd if he's not. January.
Brittany?
Yep.
Just so you know, January 9th will be my last meeting.
I am aware.
Okay, good, because, you know, if you need quorum or whatever for the 23rd.
Yep.
Yep, good.
Done. Anything else, Brittany?
The SLIC board did their first hybrid meeting last week.
Their first what?
Hybrid meeting, with Zoom and in-person.
Yeah, I tried to watch some of that, it really didn't go that well.
Um, I watched the beginning portion of it, I guess there was some issues with sound when people were at the podium, we don't know if it was a Zoom problem or a problem from here, but my suggestion is to let them keep going until they have it perfect, and then we can entertain the idea of doing it or not, so.
Sounds fine.
Right, okay.
Yep.
That's good, glad we're on the same page.
There is one more aspect. I was at that SLIC board meeting in person, and so they pulled 2, 3 people to watch, and they couldn't hear the, the speaker, and there were some issues. The other issue is that the people that are on Spectrum in the town who have upgraded to the Spectrum app, it's, it's the, the 20th century Spectrum versus the 19th century, we, we cannot get the local station here, or for on the app. And I have talked to town manager before, and he said, well, that was a, I talked to Spectrum, they said it was the town's fault, and then I talked to the town and the guys here, and they said it was Spectrum's fault, and that, and I asked our recent town manager about that, and he said, well, they couldn't do anything about it. And so, so just for the record, that the, all the town that's on the, the later version of Spectrum cannot receive any local TV from this, the local, it used to be Channel 5, it's not available.
Yeah, you need a digital receiver.
That's part of the law.
I told you what it's.
That's part of the law. Yeah, you have a cable box.
Yes.
Yeah. There is a, there's a new system where they, they, instead of having cable boxes, you get, you stream an app, it's, it's Spectrum's more recent system upgrade, much better reception, much better everything. And.
Except for you don't get all the.
Well, it works fine for me, but for Channel 5, it's not available, and I told you, I first called Spectrum, oh, it's not our business, the town hasn't asked to hook up, and so I call here, and Mike went down, they said, well, they, they, after a month, he eventually answered me and said that, well, they said that they can't do that, it's up to Spectrum. And I said to Mike, what's going on here? And he said, well, I guess we can't do anything. And so that's, that seemed like an unsatisfactory situation, but that means that a lot of the people who have upgraded their system cannot get Channel 5.
Well, hopefully those people also know that they can stream it on their, on the webs, town's website.
They have to be streamed on the website, at the.
Yeah.
Right, but the old Channel 5 is not available, so that's, yeah, yeah.
But if you have the app for the, if you're not getting the cable box, you're probably wise enough to use an app, you might have a computer to stream it.
Yeah, so I can stream it on my computer, but you know.
It's not as convenient or as big.
I, I just.
Got it.
Not as user-friendly.
Anyone else have anything for the board?